Call to order the Lynchburg Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, January 8th, 2020. And the first order of business we have is the approval of December 11th, 2019 minutes. So have you all had a chance to look them over? Any changes or accept them as is?
There's been a change on this approved.
All right.
One second.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. No opposed, okay. Great. The next, we're gonna have a public hearing and before we get started, I wanted to welcome you all and also, as you come in, there were, there is a like program menu out on the door, but I'm gonna just let you know about our rules so that we don't have to go over them multiple times in the meeting. As you, as petitioner comes forward, they have 10 minutes to present and then I will be asking for people to, you know, who want to speak in support of the project and each person gets three minutes. If there is somebody who represents a group, they also can have more time. Following that, I'll ask for opposition and people who want to speak in opposition will have three minutes. So groups get 10 minutes, but individuals get three minutes and the time is kept over here, so you know, keep your, keep your eyes on that timer. I don't want to have to use the gavel, so. So our first order of business is the following public hearing item. It's a petition of Rush Homes for a conditional use permit at 2117 Florida Avenue to allow the construction of a 48-unit apartment complex in a B3 community business district. So do you want to handle that?
If you're members of the planning commission, the petition does propose construction of 48 apartment units, a community building, and associated parking at 2117 Florida Avenue. If approved, the existing dwelling that was constructed in 1925 would be demolished. This plan is in keeping with the Campbell Avenue, Oddfellows Road corridor master plan, which recommends a mixed use for the area. Stormwater management for the proposed development would be addressed by the use of a stormwater management area in the northwestern portion of the site. Water quality would be addressed by variety of best management practices and all these things would be subject to approval of a erosion and sediment control stormwater plan by the city's environmental reviewer. The city traffic engineer did not require a traffic analysis for the proposed use. The property is served by the Greater Lynchburg Transit Company Route 2 with a bus stop approximately 40 feet from the property line. Total of 48 parking spaces would be required for the 48 units, 43 of which are shown on the submitted site plan, concept plan. A reduction in five spaces is being requested due to the proximity of mass transit, which is permitted by the zoning ordinance when a bus stop is within 1,000 feet and contains either a bus shelter or bench. The proximity of the proposed use to the existing shopping center and the bus line should fit well into the area and the planning division does recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the two conditions that are outlined in the report.
Great, thank you. So who would like to speak, present this? If you could please state your name, sign, and tell us about the project, please.
You're on the wrong one.
We're gonna win that one, I don't want to sell out the wrong one.
Thank you, members of the planning commission. My name's Bill Berkeley, I'm with Cardinal Survey and Design and we're here representing Rush Homes. Jeff Smith is here with me and hopefully he can answer a lot more questions than I can about what's going on on this site. But as Tom said, the site is at 2117 Florida Avenue, is proposed for 48 apartment units. These are all handicap accessible units. There will be elevators in each of these buildings. And we are, if you'll notice, one of the kind of unique things about this project is the fire department access between the buildings. That's required to be within 150 feet of, because the building's 180 feet long, they, to have 150-foot hose pool, we have to have that. We are looking at and working on maybe some, some alternate access that would let us do away with that and carry a fire access road around behind the buildings and maybe improve this alley. The alleyway is only 10 feet wide, but we have additional room on our side of the alley that we could probably possibly improve that. But that's something that we're, we're working on right now and may or may not happen. As Tom said, we have stormwater management on the northwest end of the site. We will be serving this property through a sanitary sewer that will go down to the, the existing city sewer along Fishing Creek and we will carry stormwater from the stormwater management facilities down to Fishing Creek as well. So that will, that is an adequate channel, we've checked those numbers and what have you. I'd like Jeff to kind of take over and tell you more about what happens in these buildings and what they're, they're there for.
Hi, everyone, greetings. My name's Jeff Smith, I'm the executive director of Rush Homes. As many of you might know, we provide housing opportunities for people with disabilities and low incomes. We are working on this project in partnership with Lynchburg Redevelopment Housing Authority. We have an agreement where they will provide some manpower support during the construction of the project. We'll provide project-based vouchers to a portion of the project and we will serve as the developer and the property manager for the project once it's built. This project will serve 48, 48 families, individuals, families. Not all will have disabilities, this is new for us. 50% will have disabilities, 50% won't. The numbers go like this. 13 units will serve people in the general population of disabilities. We will set aside five units as per low-income housing tax credit requirements for development, people with developmental disabilities who meet the Department of Justice requirements for the state of Virginia. We will also serve seven units to eight units, probably eight units, I'm gonna guess, with permanent supportive housing that will provide housing for people exiting homelessness who have disabilities. Case management for that, we have an agreement in principle with Miriam's House to provide the case management support like for that and funding for that support will come out of the operating funds for the project. Funding sources for this are low-income housing tax credits. We already have some home dollars from the city of Lynchburg that are involved in this, home from the state of Virginia. I can go into details about this, but these projects usually take about six or seven different funding sources, which makes banks really happy, I can tell you. They like all this, all the numbers and numbers of funding sources involved. These buildings were designed and brought forth as a result of some work, the housing authority, Don Fagan, who's no longer with the housing authority, and I did some work last year and looked on numerous sites around the city of Lynchburg, settled on this site specifically because it's relatively flat. And if anything in Lynchburg can be flat for this size project, this is relatively flat. It is next to a shopping center, which is perfect for our folks, especially a grocery store. The vast majority of the tenants that we have in our units do not have cars, they walk generally everywhere or take bus if they can afford it. It's also, as Tom had mentioned, very close to GLTC transportation, that's really important for us as well. And if you know the site, you're within probably of a quarter of a mile of Campbell Avenue as well, so it's a pretty major area right there. It's about, I think about a half to three-quarters of a mile from where James, from James Crossing right now, which is also undergoing some renovation. We are answering the call, that's, we need more housing, create more housing in Lynchburg, affordable housing. As many of you know, the housing study was performed last year, it's been brought to the attention of council and there's been enough work around housing in Lynchburg for you to know that we're about, we understand we're a little over 2,300 units short of the housing needed for people to be able to afford it at 30% of the area median income or less. 65% to 70% of the people that Rush Homes serve are at 30% of their median income or less. To translate that to you, for an individual person, that would be about $13,000 a year income or less. The vast majority of the people that we serve are at $10,000 a year or less. So that's who we're trying to serve with housing, to create stable families, stable opportunities to live from where people can then achieve a greater potential in their lives. Glad to answer questions.
Great, thanks. And we'll probably be calling you back up.
Can I, I should have recused myself earlier, but I just, I, Rush Homes is a client of mine, so I think I should have recused myself.
Okay, thanks. Great, thank you all.
I'd just like to let you know that the Lynchburg Redevelopment Housing Authority, Bobby Bennett, is here along with Buck Sidner. If you need to speak with him as well.
Thanks. Okay, now we'd like to hear from people who are in support of this petition, so if you would like to come up and speak, please come up, state your name and sign your name. Anybody in support of this petition? Okay, no one in, oh, great. Please state-
You know, out of, out of an abundance of caution, Mr. Chairman, my law firm, Juncy Locke, does some work for the redevelopment housing authority and I think I'm gonna need to recuse myself as well.
Okay, we're, yeah, we're-
My name is William. Jay Sidner II, people call me Buck. I am the interim director at the Lynchburg Redevelopment Housing Authority. Don Fagan took a position in Wake County, North Carolina, effective January 1 and so they lassoed me to come in until they can get a new executive director. My experience there is numerous, I spent 25 years at various times on that board. Obviously, we are excited to work with Rush Homes, we, we understand the need of housing, we understand the specific need that they have, we understand the success they've had with other projects. This is, this is a great site, it's described with beating a population that's convenient access and we strongly support from a housing authority perspective. This project, we will be providing manpower. Bobby Bennett, who is our maintenance guy, will be actually providing oversight for this project and he's got vast experience in this particular field, so we are, we're excited about it and look forward to a favorable response.
Great, thank you. Anybody else want to come and speak in favor?
You can go up there and do, do one too.
Great.
I'm Wayne Ferguson and I live across the street from it.
Okay, please sign your name.
Yeah, I'm gonna go, do one thing at a time.
Yeah.
I'm in favor for it, as long as it's kept up nicely. It's all in the right people coming in there. Before there's, across the bridge, there's a lot of mess going on down there, as long as not upon, on my end. I live right across from the shopping center and I'm in favor of it, so it doesn't matter. Is, is it gonna be, it'll slope downward or?
Well, we can, we can discuss that, that'll be a question we'll ask. I think you had mentioned that it's a relatively flat space.
Well, it's relatively flat and I walked it years back.
Yeah.
So, as a, as a kid.
Yep.
So I'm in favor for it, as long as the right folks there and, and be monitored by the owners.
Great.
That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson.
Just like, like second date or whatever.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else like to come speak in favor? All right.
Good evening, my name's Harry Burnett, I'm a homeowner in the area and I would like to kind of agree with what was previously stated, but not only that the right tenants, and I know it's hard to know who that is prior to them arriving, but not only if the right tenants are there, but that the owners also maintain that location. Affordable housing is needed and, and I think sometimes low-income people get a bad rap and I believe that they should be given the opportunity for, for good living conditions, but it's also on the backs of the owners to make sure that property is, is maintained and kept in a safe and orderly fashion. But beyond that, I also agree that affordable housing is needed and I'm for that.
Great, thank you. Okay, looking for people who want to speak in favor of this?
My name is Charles Hamlet and I live in 2109 Florida Avenue, right beside where this bit is taking place and I can say it's a good deed because it's what you're putting in there for, for people that can't get around and people that, you know, not able to do a lot of walking and so forth, it's a good, I think it's a good thing to do and, and I'm, I'm for it, you know, because I believe it's a, it's a blessed thing that, that being, being done because there are so many people that are disabled and can't move around or can't get to places, get to the store or anywhere and they do have the access to a, a place where they can go and get their food, you know, if they have to even walk, you know? And I think it's a, it's a good, good deed and I'm for it.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hamlet. Okay, we will go ahead and look for anybody who want to speak in opposition, speaking in favor?
Speaking in favor.
Oh, great, sorry, almost missed you.
Everything they said. I grew up across the street from there, I don't live here now, but I own two lots across the street from it. I'm in favor.
And what's your name?
Troy Nowland.
Great, thank you, Mr. Nowland.
Okay, do one thing at a time. I forgot to put my address.
Oh. If anybody else wants to come up also, he's getting that address down. So be, anybody who want to speak in opposition to this? Don't see any movement, so I think that, that's a good sign. I think we'll be able to close the public hearing and discuss this and it might be one of you to come up for some more questions, so it might be good to come on up now. Thank you.
May I say something? There's only two families not here tonight in that whole stretch from Campbell Avenue to the bridge.
Oh, okay, great.
The majority, really.
That's good to know, thank you. I think the only, only, only question I had, and I think that a lot of people asked about was the, the maintenance of the property and how, how, how you'll interact with your other properties around town, because I know you have other properties, so.
Yes, sir. If you like, I can describe our system for you.
Sure, that'd be great.
We have a contract maintenance person who also, he, he has his own employees. We have a work order system, it's an online work order system. He responds to most any complaint, any issue within 24 to 48 hours. Our goal is, we, we don't actually have a goal set, but we respond very quickly. We recognize, I, I think anybody who sees our properties understands, we recognize that we're part of the community. I live here, I want it to be right, I want it to be as good as it can possibly be within the, the, obviously, within the aging, obviously aging plays a part, but we want it to be as good as it can be. So we stay on top of our maintenance as much as possible.
That's great, thanks.
Because I've seen your other properties and I think they look great and given who you serve, it always stands to reason that they would look great. You know, my only question would be, are you gonna deal with the same fleet you had before?
I'm sorry, deal with-
Do you need to do the same number of people you had before? Have you, you got any plans to grow?
Oh, we are, yeah, we're actually at the end of a strategic planning process and part of that's to look at our staffing. We know that to develop this property, we're gonna have to have a, at least a halftime property manager, probably just for this, so we're aware of that, a tax credit certified property manager in addition to what we have now. One thing, I'm gonna answer a question you didn't ask, but this helps you understand that, that extra community building, we'll have an office for the property, property manager will be there at least part of the day, we would suggest, most every day of the week with full internet access, so they'll be using the online system as well. There's also gonna be a community room there as well, we want to be able to use that for community activities.
It would seem like this would be an opportunity to maybe combine that for some properties in the area too.
It might be.
Yeah.
I haven't gotten that far, but that, that's possible.
Because I, you know, it's, it's more of, it's, I guess, kind of a backhand compliment in the sense that I think you guys have done a fabulous job with your other properties, but you set a standard.
Well, okay. Okay. And I, yeah, I'm glad to have set that standard.
When I learned that it was gonna be, the Rush Homes going in there, if, or Mac went in, a no-brainer. I'm familiar with the other sites in Lynchburg and there's concern about the type of people going in there, there, there's no reason to be concerned. These, these are good people. They all have the need and the expectation to have quality living places there. Rush Homes provides that to them. Of the, of the sites that I, that you all have, this one makes the most sense in that it is right next to a bus line and they can walk to a grocery store and a pharmacy much easier than they can at any other sites. And I think this is just, it really answers a lot of needs for people. And to have that, that posed to multiple needs is fantastic.
Can I ask a question? Yeah, can I ask a question?
Yeah, but you, yeah, that's fine, you may ask a question.
So, we're talking about portion of amount of people who are disabled.
That's great.
And we're talking about the close proximity of the food line and-
Sure.
There's no sidewalk.
Yes, there is a sidewalk, absolutely.
On that side?
Um, yes.
Okay, great. All the way down to the-
Yes, yes.
That's from food line level or?
I believe I understand it's on the food line side, yes.
I mean, it's food line level, because one of the times it's snow is sleeping, or heavily slick and people would-
Yeah, to be honest, I can't say it's perfectly level, but it's relatively level and we, once we get outside of this property, we can't control the sidewalk, can you?
Understood.
Yeah, but I think, I think there is a sidewalk.
I have a question.
Yes.
Yes, you're saying that this, these units are for low income?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a age limit on?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. There is an age limit on the bottom side. A person, if a person is not a student, they can be 18 years or older, have the appropriate income to be able to pay the rent that's necessary and then they can, they can lease from us. Under that age, they cannot.
Okay.
Okay? There is no maximum age limit.
Now, do want, everybody, we are, we, we're, yeah, the public hearing is closed, so we can call on you and we can ask questions as well, so I would say, I, I think this is a great, a great thing that you all do. I think it's really neat, but I also think it's really neat that the neighbors are so welcoming. Having, having been in this in my community and seeing, seeing sometimes people aren't as welcoming, it's nice to see that people welcome that and understand the need, so I think it's a really neat project.
We accept the motion as, as stated.
Great, well, we'll go ahead and vote, all in favor? Aye. No opposed? We'll be able to let that move on to city council with a unanimous decision and thank you for bringing that to us. You'll have a good day. Okay, we're gonna go and move on with our next order of business, so if you're, if you're planning on staying, that's great, if you're planning on exiting, please do so quietly as we move forward. Our next order of business is the public hearing on the petition of Best Choice Homes Incorporated to rezone approximately one and forty-six hundredths of an acre at 1,001 Oakmont Circle from R1 Low Density Residential District to B3C Community Business District with condition to allow the use of the existing structure as an office and to allow the construction of a parking area, so if you all want to handle that, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of Planning Commission, Mr. Carl Miller of Best Choice Homes is petitioning to amend the future land use map and rezone the property at 1,001 Oakmont Circle, which is located at the intersection of Oakmont and Timberlake Road. The future land use map currently recommends a neighborhood commercial use and that's proposed to change to community commercial and the property is currently zoned R1 Low Density Residential, which is proposed to change to B3C Community Business District conditional. This property is one of the few remaining residentially zoned properties fronting Timberlake Road, which has evolved into a commercial corridor over time. If approved, the existing building would be used as a real estate office and associated parking would be constructed. The reuse of the existing home should limit any negative impact on the homes behind the property on Oakmont Circle. The scale of the existing building will blend nicely with neighboring homes and the space between the existing home and neighboring homes will be maintained as a backyard rather than a parking lot, which will also limit impact on neighbors. This is a conditional rezoning, which means the petitioner has submitted proffers specifically limiting uses and excluding certain uses in the B3 district. You will see in the report that some of those uses have been struck through and that's because those uses are actually not permitted in the B3 district anyway. So, the planning division does recommend approval of the future land use map and rezoning petitions with the conditions outlined in the report, but there are a few factors for the commission to consider, one of those being that the concept plan is not proffered and the intent now is to have a real estate office in the existing building, which is not very detrimental to the existing neighborhood, but it doesn't offer protection going forward, it doesn't prevent the tear down of that building and the construction of something else. Some of the more objectionable uses are still included in the, in the proffers, specifically payday loans, gas stations are still allowed, which is one of the reasons staff felt a little more comfortable with a B1 designation for this property, but because of the petitioner's desire to use the existing building and the required setbacks that would have been associated with that, they chose to go with the B3.
Great, thank you. And before we move on, I do have a question, if there was something done on that, for example, if it was to be torn down, would it have to be brought back to us anyway?
It would not if it's a rezoning, so, as long as it's not in conflict with the-
With any of the other conditions.
With the conditions, right.
Okay, great. All right, and so who's here to speak on behalf? Please state your name and sign there on that paper.
My name is Amy Sype, I'm with AccuPoint Surveying and Design and also with me is Mr. Carl Miller, who is the owner of Best Choice Homes. Everything that Rachel shared is, is part of the consideration. We have tried to keep the, what you'll see on the site plan, the proposed rendering, architectural rendering of the upgrades to the home, as well as keeping the backyard and also buffering the residents from any view that they would have of the home, obviously keeping the parking towards Timberlake, which is a better fit, and just trying to utilize as much as the, as is there as possible. Upgrading with landscaping and different things like that that will be required in the store, in the site plan process, as well as stormwater management, erosion control, things of that nature, and all that- And I'll let Carl speak on his specific use as a real estate office.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for considering this today. I really appreciate that. First of all, I'll just say, you know, my intent is to be a good neighbor to the folks at Windsor Hills. I spoke with many of them and some of them are here today and I really appreciate them coming out. And my intent is to utilize the existing building, as already has been stated, but to modify the roof line and the exterior and to drastically improve it and to make it a very aesthetically pleasing property in sight as you pull into Oakmont Circle entering the Windsor Hills neighborhood. We do feel like it'll actually add value and just a good aesthetic entrance there with, with the intent that we have. This, and as a real estate professional, I can certainly state that I have a vested interest in protecting neighborhoods and seeing property values continue to increase around Lynchburg. The, this specific lot has about 180 feet of frontage between the front of the building and Timberlake Road. And just kind of as a visual, I brought kind of a blown up picture. And so you can see the structure of the building is right here and there's 180 feet plus of, of front yard space between there and Timberlake Road. So a parking lot would fit very cleanly in there. There's plenty of space. It's a level lot. And that picture that's on the board right now, just for clarification, the structure is on the right hand side, on the backside of that parking lot. You can barely see the sketch there on that, on that. If you go two lots down from this property is the Social Security Office, which is right on Timberlake Road. Parking lot is in the front. Lots of parking spaces, a large commercial building. It's, it's just two lots away on the east side. And if you go one tenth of a mile on the west side of this Timberlake Road corridor, a brand new Sheetz gas station is being installed along with lots of commercial development. And if you stand on the front yard and look across Timberlake Road, this, this is what we see. There are a total of four restaurants. There's a Kroger store, Shell gas station, a large flooring warehouse and retail store across the street, Harbor Freight Tools, a dollar store. So this use is not going to be incompatible with the Timberlake Road corridor. And so that's why, you know, again, my intent is to be a good neighbor. We're going to make this a light use. I will be, the intent is to operate a small real estate office there, a small team. Traffic will not be greatly increased at all. And safety is obviously a concern. We're going to move the entrance down a little bit from the existing entrance and the entrance will be coming in straight across from Widdermeyer Vane Solutions entryway. So, and it's far enough removed from the intersection of Timberlake Road that I don't think it'll be a safety. There'll be enough room for about three or four cars to, you know, be pulling in or out of there. I don't think it's going to be a safety issue as well. So that's the, that's what we have. I really do look forward to improving the property and adding value to Windsor Hills. I do want to protect the residents. The alternative with a B1 zoning would reforce the parking lot to be in the back. I have 80 feet of space back there, which would essentially move the parking lot literally next door to the Childress's property, which is in the backyard. And I, I certainly don't want to do that with, with parking and they have a nice, there's a nice grass space. The intent will be to leave that backyard looking like a yard. We'll put some buffer space in there and protect not just the Childress's, but there's five homes that are within sight of where the backyard is currently. And my intent is just to keep that a nice green space and just to keep all the cars in the front with the parking lighting requirements from the city and all of that. So B3 zoning is the only way I could accomplish that. I did ask if, if there'd be a way I could go B1 and get a variance and move the parking lot in the front or a conditional use permit. And that seemed not to be an option. So that's why I was, I felt like I was forced to stay with the B3 request in, in spite of the fact that B1 would meet my needs. You know, that's why we put the proffers in, just to let the city know that my intent is not to make this a big commercial use. My intent is.
Or tear it down.
We're going to use the existing structure and just modify the roof line, modify the exterior and improve the value significantly for the city. So I do look forward to improving the property and adding value to both Windsor Hills and just personally continuing my investment in the city of Lynchburg as a business owner.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. You'll want to have a seat. We'll probably be calling you back up. Thank you. Okay, and is there anybody here who'd like to speak in favor of this petition? If you'd please come forward, sign your name, state your name and give us your thoughts.
My name is Pat Childress. This property would butt directly up to mine. I am the one neighbor that it affects the most. I am all for it if you guys would explain to me. I don't really understand the B1 and B3. I, I think, I know that the B3 means that it would be commercial and they could tear down the building and I would not like that. B1 with conditions, I'm all, I'm totally for that if I know, if the conditions are written out and I know what they are. I met Mr. Miller and there was an instant rapport, I believe, what he says. I don't think he will make it any more business like than a real estate office. I'm old. I'm 76. I've lived a while and I've seen things. God forbid this should happen. Mr. Miller could pass away. His wife or somebody could sell it in three years. And then it could be torn down. So I don't think he would do it, but I would like it written out in those conditional things that it will never be. I mean, the parking lot in the front on Timberlake Road, what a great idea. The parking lot in the back, next to my porch, where we spend from the end of April to the end of October on our back porch. We drink our coffee out there. We eat every evening meal out there. We eat lunch out there. That's our, that's our space. A parking lot with a lot of lights would not be very much in our favor. So the B1 and the B3 confuses me somewhat. I am totally in favor of him doing this if it's not a parking lot in the back. Now, I don't really know what that means. I will say this, that the man across the street who has a, an office that faces Timberlake Road, best thing that ever happened to the neighborhood. He's only there Monday through Friday, not on weekends. He has about six patients a day coming and going. Big deal. That's, that's nice. And that's how I feel a real estate office would be. I think that would be fine. I would certainly not like a gas station there in my backyard. So does that mean I'm for it? I am for it, but only if it's not a parking lot in the back. So I don't know how to word that.
As we go on, we, we can pose that questions to make sure.
Yes.
And, and we, your comments down, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Childress. Okay, if someone else wants to come up and speak, that'd be great.
I'm Merle Alvis and I'm Ms. Childress's next door neighbor. I have met Carl. He was kind enough to come early on and introduce himself soon after he bought the property and tell us what his intent was and has kept us informed. And again, I appreciate that. I've been there almost 10 years now. I have good neighbors. I love the neighborhood. I do not see where his business would in any way disrupt the current neighborhood. And in fact, I think the modifications he's proposing to the building and as Ms. Childress says, if he can put the parking lot in the front, will have minimal impact on us. You know, you're always excited to see your neighborhood improve and I think this could actually be an improvement. My husband was a real estate person many years ago. He passed away in 2015. But probably 20 years before that, he spent a lot of his life in real estate. And I know that they are generally not wild disruptive places that go into disrepair and, and devalue your neighborhood. So I think as Ms. Childress said, if she could have, and, and me and others too, though we're probably the two that are most interested and affected because it's Carl, then Ms. Childress, then me, and then you turn the corner. So, well, I'm right there on the corner and, and my property is very visible too. So I work real hard and spend a lot of money to try to keep it looking good as, as does Ms. Childress. And so anything that can continue to add value to our homes and neighborhood. And to have someone who is supportive, I think Carl's very approachable. I'm feel sure if we ever had questions down the road, he would certainly be willing to listen and hopefully work to resolve any issues that we might have. But I think this would actually help the neighborhood from what we have now. The, as Ms. Childress said, the doctor's office across on the other side, you don't know they're there unless you happen to be just going past when somebody's going in or coming out of one of the driveways. So I would support also this proposal. And hopefully we can all feel real good about it when it's concluded. And then if I can see with my glasses to write my name.
Anybody else want to come and speak in favor of this? All right. How about opposition? Is there anybody in opposition to this petition? If you'd want to come up, please state your name, write your name down and I'd like to hear what you have to say.
My name's Jim Burke Meyer. My wife and I live in the Windsor Hills neighborhood on Cornwallis Drive. And I hate to, I hate to be the only negative voice here today, but I have some concerns. Particularly, for example, the access to Timberlake Road from Oakmont Circle today is such that there are certain hours of the day that we actually drive two miles out of our way to get to a traffic light because Timberlake has just become a racetrack. And it just, and coupled with the traffic from the other side of the street, which is where he pointed out there's a Harbor Freight and a flooring store and a, and several restaurants and things like that. That complicates the issue of, of trying to get out. And last but not least, there's the, the innumerable people that are coming up Timberlake and make a U-turn right there to go to the Social Security Office. So my concern is the, the fact that the, the gateway to our neighborhood is, is currently under, under duress already. I would be concerned about additional traffic being put there. As I say, there are, it's actually a couple hours during the day where, for example, from like four to six, we won't even try to get out on Timberlake. Okay, that was my first point. I, I do have, I think the, the similar question that everyone else has had is why do we need to go to B3C? I don't know that much about all, how all this works. I must admit, this is my first time at a public meeting. But I would say that the concern is not for the current developer, but what happens when he sells it? Can that property then be just torn down and basically another strip, strip type property put up in there? That would be my concern to, to giving him a carte blanche in that regard. And then lastly, there, if anyone's looked on Timberlake, there is a lot of office space or, or space available. All of those places that we saw pictures of have vacancies. That, that huge mud pit that has been created across from the curbers on Timberlake, that we've been trying to figure out why the developer hasn't done anything for three years other than push dirt around. I know there's going to be vacancies in that as well as on down towards, towards where the Lowe's and, and that is. So I'm not sure why we need a, a business office at that point in this, at this point in time. So. Did I make it?
Thank you, Mr. Burke Meyer.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak in opposition? If there's no one who wants to speak in opposition, I'd like to give you all the opportunity to come up and, and discuss some of that. You know, maybe discuss the, the issue. It seems like the, the B1 and B3, there's some questions about it. And also the potential future use and that'd be great. Sure.
Yeah, I mean, usually the rebuttals first, but so, either one. So B1 is typically office, retail, restaurant, service uses that are at more of a neighborhood scale. The B3 opens it up a little bit more to slightly more intense uses. They're supposed to be sort of a community type zoning. And one thing we kept hearing about was the parking. So with the B1, when we updated the zoning ordinance, we said, well, if B1 is supposed to be sort of that neighborhood commercial, smaller scale type use, then it should not be as auto centric. The parking should be in the back. And that brings buildings closer to the street, making everything more walkable. So even though a real estate office is allowed in both B1 and B3, which maybe is more better suited for B1, they were not going to be able to meet the setback for the parking behind the existing building.
They could have, they didn't want to. Okay? So I'll just clarify that point and go ahead, please.
That was, that was the main concern I, I heard brought up. But yeah, B3, B3 does have more uses that are allowed, some of which have been proffered out.
So the B, so if it were B1, they would have to put the parking lot in the back. And so what people support it, they like that the parking lot isn't in the back. So that, that's the, kind of the rub there. Okay?
And that's understandable. The, the key thing, and we went back and forth with this. And the reason Rachel went ahead and recommended approval of it was, at the time, we, I thought that they were proffering out some of the other objectional B3 uses. As Rachel told you, the majority of what they proffered out didn't permit it in B3 anyway. What you need to understand and what this neighborhood needs to understand, if you rezone this the way it is written today, if they decide to sell it next month and put a McDonald's on it, that's exactly what can go there. Okay? There is no prohibition from demolishing that house. There's no prohibition of developing it as a gas station or anything like that. So you need to understand what you're doing if you rezone it the way it's submitted to you today. Well, the, the parking has to be 20 feet off the line.
What, the road or the?
The, the property line, the, can you pull the ordinance up?
Yeah. Isn't there room?
And I, I think.
In the roadside, does still put the parking on the?
Well, it's between the structure and the house. I think they could very well get where they need to be if they would just pro, consider proffering the site plan. And just say, this is what we're going to do. We're going to keep the house. We're going to put the parking up here that satisfies the neighbor. That would satisfy the planning staff, that they're not going to develop it into some type of fast food restaurant, gas station into the entrance to this neighborhood and we could move on. But until they do that, you should understand what you're acting upon.
So if they proffered the site plan, as you suggest, and that's, and we accept it on that basis, then that would lock them in for even if, if, we wouldn't have to change it to a B3. Is that, is that what you're suggesting?
You would because of where the parking is. No, you would, because of where the parking is.
Because of the parking. But they would be locked in as the proffer on that particular site plan.
Correct.
Unless they were to bring something here and petition for a new rezoning.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
So, that means they would not be able to have parts, accessories, attire, flea markets, thrift stores, grocery store, yada, yada, yada.
Well, which?
So, there's a few, if you're pulling the one from Dropbox, the ones that have red lines through them, I think it's like five, are not actually allowed in the B three either way, but yes, the others would not be permitted there.
If they proffered that.
If, well, so, the proffers that they have listed, they're already, those are already on the table. What we're talking about now, because the neighborhood is saying.
Okay. I just want to make sure I'm understanding and reading it.
Right, because the neighborhood is saying they agree, they like their proposed use in the existing house, but there's no protection down the line for that. I don't doubt Mr. Miller's intent to run the real estate out of, office of it, but we know property does sell. It's what keeps some of us in business. And so, you know, down, down the line, proffering the concept plan would be one assurance for the neighborhood that it's going to remain close to what it is now.
Unless it comes back for another year end, and we get through all this, and everybody's in support.
So, it seems like that's the, that answers everybody's questions then, you know, kind of look at the site plan, it seems like, other than traffic issues, which we have a hard time dealing with anyway, but.
I can speak to that.
Sure, okay.
So, part of the, and Tom can correct me if I say it wrong, but I know that part of the intent with VDOT, because this is, you know, 460 business, is future plans to close that crossover. So, that would limit anyone who comes out of there would not be allowed to left-hand turn or U-turn. So, it would be right in, right out, basically. Now, I don't, you know, I'm not, I work with VDOT all the time, but I know things change, so, you know, and it's Timberlake Road, so.
There is an entire plan that VDOT put forth for improvements on Timberlake, which did involve some.
Yeah. So, you know, clearly, the city has control over residential and other streets, but since this is part of VDOT's plan as well, I mean, that's just to address some of that concern. And if you want to speak to the.
Yeah, sure. Again, when I met with the neighbors, again, my intent, like I stated all along, is the truth, I certainly intend to be a good neighbor and to improve the property, and I have no intent to sell this, you know. The investment I'm putting into this property is significant. I paid well above retail price for a residential home, taking on the risk, after consulting with the city and getting assurance it'd be no problem to rezone this and make it usable for an office. I did not make my contract contingent upon the city approving it, just because I was trying to help out the owner who was there, the Davis who's lived there for 20-plus years, after had an informal meeting with the city, and they said, you know, it should be no problem, you're on Timberlake Road, you're on commercial corridor. Had I known that the city would be very opposed to allowing a parking lot in the front, which is my only option, to protect the neighborhood with the B three zoning, okay? Had I known all of that, I probably, you know, would have slowed the process down. So, let me just say that the intent here is to invest, you know, well north of another hundred thousand dollars in improvements and parking lot. So, yeah, I understand the concern of, oh, I could sell this and McDonald's comes in. That's not the intent. I think my investment would be such that it wouldn't make sense from a, you know, from a profitability standpoint, I guess is my, is my point, and that's, that's all I was going to say there. This is a long game for me. I've lived in the city for 12 years, my business is in the city, I love the city of Lynchburg, it is a great place to live, work, and play, and I'm heavily vested, and that's my long-term, my long-term plan.
I, I accept everything you've done on, you know, on the face of it, and I commend you for what looks like it's going to be a, an improvement of the, of the property, but it does concern me about the, the B three status, and, you know, we have, we talk in this commission all the time about protecting neighborhoods, and as we all know that have been on this commission for a while, we've had issues with Windsor Hills and tried to protect it and balance off and make certain that the right things occur back in Windsor Hills. Would you be willing to proffer the, the site plan?
My intent all along has been to use this as a office space of, that is something the city requires, I am open to that. My only concern is just that the time that has been lost, as I've been waiting for approval from the city, you know, on multiple levels.
Well, we can't, we can't.
We need clarification. Would you have to go through the process by that, is what you're trying, asking?
Yeah.
Would you have to start over?
You can proffer it, yeah. You can proffer it this evening, this afternoon.
And, and, and also, we don't require proffers.
Yeah, right.
We can't legally do that, it's just, I think the planning commission is hearing the neighbor's concern, and, you know, I realize you're trying to get this developed, so that may be one way to do it.
That's why I wanted to make that clarification. You could, you can modify proffers, but stay on the same schedule, is what, yes.
Yeah, you can do it right here, right now. Get a drink of water, come back, you have all proffered.
So, I mean, obviously, not only is my intent to use this as an office space, but it's, it is also an investment long-term for me, you know. So, I guess my question to Mr. Martin or to the city is that if we proffer this site, is that the right terminology, the way it's written now, we proffer the site? To one of the neighbor's points, if I get in a car accident, I'm dead the next day, and my wife tries to sell it, and a new developer comes in, they could petition for whatever use they want to from the city, and it goes through the same process I'm going through now. If we're a B three proffered site and somebody wants to B three un-proffering it, is that the case? It could be a contingency. It would come back through.
So, if it's sold, if it's sold and they wanted to put a use in the existing building that is allowed, not proffered out, they could do that. If they wanted to build the McDonald's, they would have to come back. If they wanted to do one of these uses that you've proffered out, like, you know, pawn shops, they would have to come back. So, they could either go in the existing building with the uses that you're allowing, or they would have to come back to the planning commission and city council.
The answer is, I am open to that, absolutely.
Well, I mean, if you'll proffer it, I know it's going to change my, how my vote would be.
But, but if you proffered the site plan, would that mean that it would only be able to be used as a real estate office? So, it could be used as any kind of office, any building, any, any business, or just other than, not the ones that?
Not the ones that are redlined here.
Kind of attorney's office?
Yeah, professional services.
Professional office.
There's, yeah. If, actually, Tom, do you want to pull up that other document? And there's, there's a list of zoning uses that are allowed in the B three, that, so you could kind of get a visual of other things that could go in there if the space worked for whatever business. So, anything without a red line is permissible in the existing building as, as we're talking about now with.
So, it could be a gas? Is that what you just said?
Well, if you're going to put a gas station in a house.
It wouldn't, you'd have to change the site plan.
Right.
Right.
And I know, I'm, I'm asking on his behalf, if he were to proffer the site plan, and, and his wife goes to sell, what, what could go in it besides a real estate office without them doing anything?
Anything on this list without a red mark that they could go in with the existing parking lot, well, the proposed parking lot and then the existing building, which a gas station likely can't do. So, that one's kind of almost proffered out by virtue of the, the concept plan being.
But also not ones with a condition that's required in B three anyway.
That's true, yeah, those are CUPs.
Right. So, so only the permitted, the base permitted ones?
The ones with P next to it, yeah. Florist, health and personal care, farm produce, bank, short-term loan, that's one that.
Can I ask a clarification question?
Yes.
If anybody, again, let's just pretend that scenario happens, God forbid, if it does.
Please.
I want to stay around, but if I don't.
If I sold it.
You don't have to die.
If somebody's going to modify the building itself, it still has to come back through here, correct? Like, if somebody wants to do a florist store, I think I saw florists up there, the house right now would be permitted, but if they were going to modify the existing structure, would they have to come back to city on this?
If they're going to pull a building permit and knock down some walls or something like that, then no. If they're going to make the footprint twice as big, then yes.
Or add on, just adding, probably adding on, correct?
I think you can do a second level without coming back.
So, the answer, I guess, I'm just trying to find a solution here, because really the parking lot was my biggest problem with this, with B one, really, that's what it come down to, just to, number one, protect the neighbors behind me, and then also just to prevent my clients from having to walk 150 feet around a building to get to the front door. You know, honestly, that's, that was the intent. So, I guess my question is, if I proffer this site.
Site plan.
The site plan, this, proffer the site plan. I guess the question I still have is, how will that, what's the negative implications, you know, from, from the owner's standpoint? You know, because I, I see, I know the next door, Widomire Vane Solutions, has a proffered site as well, and it's worked very well for him. And, you know, I, I am open to this.
I think the intent, you know, you came in and you wanted to do the parking lot in the front, and we had our disagreements about that. We kind of came to terms with it. I think at this point, what our concern is, is that it's going to be developed the way you're showing it now. And the end result is, if planning commission and ultimately council adopts this the way it is written and shown, there is no assurance that it's going to be done that way. Because if it's adopted, if it's just rezoned the way it's presented at this point in time, that building can be demolished, any of those other uses could go in there. You know, sheets could decide to move down here from up the road, not that it's big enough, but they could, which, from an investor, that might be very good to you, but from a community standpoint, in Windsor Hills, that'd probably be very bad. So, I think what the assurances we're looking for is that you're going to develop it using the existing building with your parking lot where you're showing it. And if you proffer the site plan, you're going to develop it in that way, I think that assurance is good.
Okay, can I ask a clarified question on that? So, if we proffered the site plan, obviously you have a proposal in front of you.
Are you talking about this?
Yeah, this right here. If, if this, if this site plan here gets modified and the pergola, for example, goes away, I mean, my plan's to keep it there, but if I, it's a pergola, if I put a roof line on that instead of leaving it open. Okay, I, I, last one, clarify. What I'm saying, proffered the site, you know, if one less shrub is there, you know, is that going to be a problem? I guess that's, that's my question, is, and that, that is my intent, I'm not trying to.
Usually, the wording that people submit on a proffer like this is substantial compliance with, with, with the concept plan, which is, you know, we, we acknowledge that things will likely have to get shifted a little bit, more shrubs, less shrubs, whatever, during the site plan phase, and that's fine. But the building and the parking lot is mainly what needs to be where it is on the, on the concept plan.
If you're committed to substantial, saying substantially the same as what you're, you know, presenting us, there's not really a downside. But for the neighbors, there's a, there is a downside the way it's written, and I think that's the, you know, I think that's the issue. I had a question, it looks like on our picture, there's, there's trees and growth in the front yard.
Those have been removed by the previous owner.
Okay. That's why, I thought I had driven by there and seen that, I was like, I don't remember seeing that, but, okay.
I just can't help but think about our last meeting we had was the FNB Bank on Boon Spur Road, and we made a comment about, no, the R one thing there, you know, it's going to come back, it's going to come back, it'll face our very next meeting, we're dealing with an R one issue going to be three.
Yeah. So, the answer, the answer to Mr. Rogers' question, or I'm sorry, Mr. Light's question is, yes, I'd be willing to proffer this site as it stands. Again, I mean, as long as there's, I don't want to be so bound that I can't wiggle one, one inch here, but.
Changing the plan.
The, the build, the structure's not changing, the parking lot would be in the front, you know, the driveway, there might be a couple modifications there, but no, it's, it's going to stay exactly. I mean, in fact, there will be, the driveway's going to be up right across from that first entrance to Widomire Vane Solutions there, just to give the access a little bit further off Timberlake Road. Again, you know, I want to keep this a safe spot for not only my staff, but for my clients as well.
Tom, from the documentation viewpoint, what do we need to do? I mean, Mr. Miller has stated that, I assume it's being taken down in the minutes, does he need to write something down on the, on the actual site plan that says this has been proffered as part of the petition?
Yeah, they, he would need to write it out and sign and date it today.
Give you a minute to do that, if you'd like to.
Mark, I, I agree with what you said, I mean, I, that was the first thing I thought of when I, when I read the proposal. I, I do feel like it's different.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I just, you know, looking at the landscape and, and what's around it, I do feel it's, it's, it's a little different.
I made a really hardcore, dedicated effort, go out there in the rain to look at the site. You know, firsthand, I'm, here we go, we just got through, say we've got to protect R one, and the first thing of the year is R one to B three.
Right.
And said, they're studying that, says, no, there's no one going to buy the house and use it as a residence.
Right.
You know, and I wrestled with that, and said, the best use is to convert it to a business establishment. And I think what he's coming forward with is a good use for that piece of terrain, that building, and blends in with the other activities on Timberlake Road adjacent to it, blends in, I mean, you're hard pressed. The fact that he's taken concern of his backyard neighbors is really impressive. I mean, other people are like, yeah, I can do what I want. But this, I mean, there's, there's a lot of forethought to it, but the concern we have also is making sure that if some change, the neighborhood is protected, the rest of that R one, that residential area is protected.
And something also that's different is, this isn't one of the scenic, this isn't the scenic quarter. And if you look at, if you look at the way things were zoned, well, it is scenic.
Yeah.
It's scenic.
Really?
But, but it isn't this, that, that, that was, you know, that's a designated scenic quarter.
Yes.
And it really fits right in on all sides, like, all the way down the road, both ends.
Well, I was going to say, I don't think it quite fits in as, as a B three, I think it fits in as a B one, but I, I just, I can't wrap my head around why we can't have, oh, I know, it's right across the street, is all that red stuff, and then it's up the street, but I would rather put a little orange block there than a little red block there, just because it, it matches the others. And so, you can't have a B one with a conditional use permit to have the parking in the.
Development standards that were put in place when the new zoning ordinance was adopted for B one, if you remember, we had a lot of discussions about drive-throughs, we had a lot of discussions about floor plate size, and coming up with a type of development that would really fit into and be walkable to the neighborhood.
Well, one of the areas to say is, who's to say what's the front and what's the side?
Well, the problem is, well, the zoning ordinance tells you what the front and the side is, and that's because it's got two.
Is it, does it front on Timberlake, or does it front on, whatever?
Well, that existing building fronts on Timberlake, but.
It does?
In terms of street frontage, it's got two frontages. It would be very easy if they were redeveloping the site and not using the existing building, the building could put on the corner, and the parking could go to the side and the rear, but they're trying to reuse existing building, and that's what makes it so difficult. So, I mean, I agree with you, and in terms of what else is along that corridor, B one would be the best-case scenario. If you look at the photograph of the, the Vane Solution, where is it?
He had it, actually.
I thought you had it.
Oh, at the end.
Which is zone B one, you can see, this is Timberlake Road, and there's his parking lot, all right? Right there in the back. So, that's just something you don't have to think about. And it was the same, same scenario, it was an existing house, right?
I guess one of the things, when I think about the B one, and I think about new, new structures, and, you know, kind of the move to, to build things up on the front at the same time, you know, I, I'd hate to see someone say, well, I'm gonna, if I need 20 space
same time, you know, I, I'd hate to see someone say, well, I'm gonna, if I need 20 spaces, and I don't wanna use the back and, you know, wanna protect the neighbors, I don't wanna tear a building down and move it, and move it closer, 'cause the idea is to move them closer to the road, that's not getting any closer to the road, no matter what you do, it just, you know. So, I think that's one of the things that, that I was thinking about. I see, I see what you're saying, a lot of B1 through there, but I think with the conditional, with, with, with those conditions and those proffers, if somebody's going to make something that is anything different than that, it still has to come back to us, so in that sense, it seems like a more positive, more positive thing.
I think it does protect the neighbors, and, yeah, it does have to come back to us, and if Sheets or McDonald's decided to come in and offer you to buy your property, they'd, they'd have a hard time getting past the neighbors, I think.
I think, you're not...
Oh, you, you, you weren't to ask a question?
I do. I, I hate to seem like I don't know what's going on, but I don't, I'm almost embarrassed that I don't know what proffer means. You all keep throwing that word, I don't know what it means.
It means he's, he's offering that as part of the conditions of his petition. In other words...
He's offering to do something.
What's happening here is, what's taking place is, we're giving him special dispensation to operate, so that if any of those dispensations or conditions change, then it would go back to square zero. Nobody would be able to do anything because they own the land. So, what, what's basically on the table right now, what, well, let me do it this way, what he has gone out of his way to do is to make this as non-impactful of the neighborhood as possible. And where we've had a problem is, it's difficult to do that, maintain the current building, and give him the, the conditions that he needs to be able to run his business. So, what he's now saying is, so, so that what's on the table right now is, if he makes this proffer, he agrees to restrict the, the use of this property to what it currently looks like as far as the existing building and what he's, what the concept parking plan is. If that changes, if that changes in any way, if that footprint changes, then the new owner would have to come back and come before us again and have to answer to you all's concerns again.
But you would still have to change it to B3?
Yes, it was, it was still B3.
Okay, and one other thing, I, I hope you all pass it right before, this house faces Timberlake Road, the front of the house is facing Timberlake Road, but you, the mailbox is on Oakmont Circle, and the address is Oakmont Circle, so if you go by what the address is of the house, 1001 Oakmont Circle, then the back of the house is really on the side of the house. Do you get me?
Right, and that was your question.
So, yes, and that, and that's what, so, so, he's, if he put the parking lot in the front of the house, it's really not in the front of the house, it's on the side of the house and faces Timberlake Road.
Tom?
I mean, really, think about that, because the address was 1001 Oakmont Circle, it's not anything to do with Timberlake Road, so the Timberlake Road is really the side of the house. Why can't he put a parking lot in this, on the side of the house?
Well, I, I think, you know, we're not, we, we wanna address your question, and we can talk about that, but, but that might not, that, that, he's, what he's doing with his plan and, and doing it like that actually probably protects you and protects your view shed better than, if, if it was on the side, for sure. So, I think it's a, I feel like it's a really good compromise for the use of the land, in my opinion.
I mean, I'd just like to compliment Mr. Miller for, for being as flexible as he's been. When I first saw the petition come in, I thought, oh, boy, this is not gonna be good 'cause we're concerned about Windsor Hills once again, and we're always concerned, as Mr. Lowe said, and, and some of the others said, we're always concerned about business creep, commercial creep into neighborhoods. We wanna protect these neighborhoods, and I think we've done this about as, as much as we can possibly do, and still let Mr. Miller have some flexibility with his property because he, he, you know, he's entitled to have some flexibility with his investment, but the good thing is, I think with the proffer, which he's agreed to do, with the proffer, the concerns that you all had about some kind of a change in the condition to a McDonald's or a Sheetz, that's not gonna happen unless they tear the building down and come back in and, and come back before the, the commission. So, I, I, I feel good about it with the proffer, and I've, I've gotta commend Mr. Miller for doing it, because not all people that come in and, and offer petitions are as flexible as he's been, and I can't remember the last time that I've actually had residents come in in a situation like this and generally speak in favor of a, of a petition.
Could I ask, are there, is there lighting in the parking lot? Any lighting?
We don't plan for there to be, if it's not necessary.
Okay.
I'd just like to did a, Mr. Light's comments, I mean, with the proffer now being made there, I, I support it.
You got any thoughts?
So, we do have this additional proffer for substantial compliance with the site plan, so if, or, yep, so if you wanna just sort of tack that onto the motion, you can consider that part of the petition now, he signed it.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the petition, including the proffer as submitted.
And I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. Any other discussion before we put it to vote? Okay, let's vote, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? No opposition? Good luck at City Council.
Do we have to also vote on the future land use?
Oh, you, do we have two, two things?
Yeah.
To amended future...
There are, there are two actions, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Good catch.
Good catch, yeah.
Second time that's happened.
Say one to sleep with the will to die.
I move that we change the future land use map to match the zoning that we just agreed to.
I'll second that.
Okay. And so, we'll vote on that? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, with no opposition, both of us will move on to City Council, so thank you for bringing that.
Thank you.
Thank you for making a nice plan and having patience.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have some new business, I do believe, let's see here. This is the consideration of renaming of a street from Tunnel Court to Fieldhouse Lane, naming an unnamed road as Tunnel Court, and the naming of an unnamed segment as City View Lane. I think it's all under construction right now, right?
Yes, sir. Members of Planning Commission, Liberty University is applying to rename and name some roads on their property. We have a diagram of what they plan to do right now, and I'm gonna read the description. They're planning to name the currently unnamed road in between what is currently Tunnel Court Lane and Tunnel Court and City View Lane, that's Tunnel Court. They plan to name the currently unnamed segment between what is currently Tunnel Court and City View Lane as City View Lane, and this is an item that's, it's not up for a vote, it's purely here for your comment.
And does anybody have any questions about that, since we're not voting on it? When are they planning on being done, do you know?
That I'm not aware of, but I'm sure.
Oh, yeah, everything, I'm sorry, I didn't know there was...
That's okay, it'll be, right now, should be, the timing should be late September.
Great, thanks.
And how many cars were there, hold with that parking lot?
I'm sorry?
How many cars, again, with that parking lot?
Not enough.
Two, two thousand?
Y'all's up, okay.
Well, do we have any other business to discuss?
Typically, at your first meeting of the year, the Planning Commission elects its chair and vice chair. We fail to put that on the agenda, but we're prepared to do that, or if you would prefer waiting till you have a full commission, or like your next meeting, we could do that
Send another, send another way we can vote Dave back in, or we can wait.
He's not here.
I'll second the nomination.
Who, Dave?
For Dave?
I mean, sorry, for Tom.
Oh. I was excited, I don't think Dave would vote for that, he's like... Oh, do, will we, do we wanna wait until Dave gets here, and, I mean...
I don't think he cares, he's not, he doesn't want to.
So, the Code of Virginia, just, I mean, we can go through, the Code of Virginia provides that the local commission shall elect from its appointed members a chair and a vice-chairman whose terms are for one year. The, the duties of the chairperson are to preside at the meeting, appoint committees, rule on procedural questions, report official communications, vote positive and negative and certify the official documents from the commission. The duties of the vice-chair are to assume the powers of the chairperson in, in their absence and carry out other duties, per your bylaws, and typically, since the city planner serves as the secretary, the city planner and my staff do those duties. So, typically, what we do is, the existing chair gives control of the meeting to me as a secretary, and I'll ask for nominations from the floor for the position of chairperson. So, do you want to proceed with that?
I would.
I would, too.
All right, are there any, not, any nominations from the floor for the position of chair?
I'll nominate Tom Rogers.
I'll second.
All right, are there any others? All right, being none, the nominations are closed. All those in favor of Mr. Rogers being the chair for 2020, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, all right. Are there any nominations for the position of vice-chair?
I'll nominate Ken Johnson.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, are there any others? All right, being none, the nominations are closed. All those in favor of Ms. Johnson holding the office of vice-chair for 2020, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, congratulations. So, Mr. Chair, your meeting, I would like, just for the minutes, for the commission to, non, continue me on as the secretary, at least.
I'd like to nominate Tom to continue on as the secretary.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Congratulations.
All right. Good job, Tom.
I move we adjourn.
I'll second that.
Second that.